Welcome. I'm going to call to order the town council regular session. It's about 7:32 and the date is Tuesday, May 29th. And tonight, we have the distinct honor and privilege of having three Eagle Scouts here with us today who celebrated their Eagle Court of Honor at Christ the King Church, I believe it was May 6th. So I'm going to ask them to come forward and lead the pledge after they speak their name into the microphone. And then I'm going to read through the proclamations that the town had presented them with. So if you come forward. If you wanted to come up here and I'm going to hand you the mic and you can pass it and then you can lead the pledge of allegiance.
My name is Emmett Schlenz.
I'm Ryan McNorton.
And I'm Andrew Gannon.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And if we can ask you just to stay here for a minute, I'm going to read through the proclamations. So whereas we have Andrew Gannon, a graduating senior at South Kingston High School who will attend Wentworth Institute of Technology in Boston in the fall to study construction management, is a member of Troop One in Kingston and has devoted his time and his energy to complete the requirements of and participate in such a worthwhile organization as the Boy Scouts of America. And whereas Emmett Schlenz, a graduating senior at Prouse High School who will attend Loyola, Merrimott University in Los Angeles in the fall to study English, is a member of Troop One in Kingston, has devoted his time and energy to complete the requirements of and participate in such a worthwhile organization as the Boy Scouts of America. And whereas Ryan McNorton, a graduating senior at Bishop Hendrickson High School who will attend Boston University in the fall and plans to study biomedical engineering, is a member of Troop One in Kingston and has devoted his time and energy to complete the requirements of and participate in such a worthwhile organization as the Boy Scouts of America. Whereas their quest to achieve the designation of Eagle Scout, their accomplishments have been many. Whereas Andrews, final Eagle project, he maintained and created trails that ran through the woods at the Watson Farm located on Conanicut Island in Jamestown, linking various points of interest and facilities. And where through his efforts and coordination, the trail accessibility improvements have benefited school groups and visitors that have visited the farm. And whereas Emmett did a junior docent of a Petaquamaski Historical Society for his Eagle project, he transformed a former exhibit room into a safer home for archives by designing a shelf layout, repainting the floors and transporting hundreds of centuries of old items from the basement to the second floor, thereby preserving the Washington County Jail's archives, allowing for countless generations to research the tales of their ancestors. And whereas Ryan McNorton, for his Eagle project, he constructed a rain garden for the North Kingston Chamber of Commerce to catch, filter, and soak up storm water using native plants adapted to occasional ponding, resulting in reduced flooding, the removal of stormwater pollutants, and a recharge of the groundwater. Whereas these three Eagle Scouts has attained the highest, most prestigious award in Boy Scouts, the Eagle Scout Award, bringing pride to themselves and honor to Troop One Kingston, their family, and to our community. May this be a prelude of their future dedication to a purpose and service until the three of them accomplish the goals they are seeking. Now therefore, we, the Town Council of the Town of South Kingston, do hereby extend our congratulations for a job well done and best wishes for success in all future endeavors. Congratulations. Could we please have the roll call? Present. Here.
Councilwoman Eddy.
Here.
Councilwoman Fogarty.
Here.
Councilman O'Neill.
Here.
Thank you, Sue. We have the approval of the minutes of previous meetings. We have the work and regular session, May 14th, 2012.
I move approval of those minutes.
Second.
We have motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries, 5-0-0. We also have the special session, May 7th, 2012.
I move approval of the special session, May 7th, 2012.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. We also have the closed executive session, May 7th and May 14th, 2012.
I move approval of those minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Would any council person like anything removed from the consent agenda?
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries, 5-0-0. Thank you. Next on our agenda, we have licenses. This is a resolution granting a holiday sales license to Sleepy's LLSC doing business as Mattress Giant, 3033 Tower Hill Road, Saunders Town, Rhode Island, subject to approval by the Fire Chief and Communications Superintendent, application by Joseph Grassi, CFO 1000 South Oyster Bay Road, Hicksville, New York, and this is new. Do we have someone here to represent Mattress Giant?
Probably napping.
Seeing none, we will hold this, otherwise we'll carry it to the next meeting.
Sorry. What else could you say?
License B is a resolution granting a victory license to Chemco, 32 Whispering Pine Way, Exeter, Rhode Island, for concession operations at Broad Rock Playfields and West Kingston Park, application by Kenneth Elliott, Whispering Pine Way, Exeter, and this is new. Do we have Kenneth here? Welcome.
Good evening.
You've done this before, so if you want to-
Yes, we have.
-tell us a little bit about what your plans are.
It would be pretty much the same as what we have done at Old Mountain Field, Town Beach, we opened this weekend, and the other two. We have already opened the other two, we're just waiting for the Health Department to give us their blessings.
Okay, do we have any questions here at the Town Council table? Polly?
Could you remind us again what you're going to be serving at here?
Of course. There'd be hot dogs, hamburgers, cheeseburgers, french fries.
Stop, stop.
Soft drinks, ice cream, both novelty and dipping ice cream, and a product called Baby Elliot's Frozen Lemonade, which hopefully you'll all try.
Yeah, that's right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions here at the table? Jim?
How was business this weekend?
It was fair. We unfortunately, the Health Department didn't give us clearance to sell food products that are prepackaged yet, so we were limited with what we could sell. But it was a very pleasant group of people that were there. We were used to Scarborough Beach, so it was an entirely different group.
It was prepackaged products, I don't understand, I guess I thought those would have been the most sterile and the safest, so can you-
That is correct. Cisco manufactures these products and they're done under very strict rules and regs. They come to us frozen and then they're heated in a microwave.
So those are treated differently by the Department of Health versus other food?
Yes, because other foods are subject to the environment and people touching food incorrectly and passing it on. When you prepackage something, you heat it and you serve it to the person in the package. Same as novelty ice cream, same thing.
Yes, I don't understand, I'm having a problem with that. I thought that would have been the safest and the easiest to move forward with. Okay.
Polly?
Thank you.
What do you consider prepackaged? Do you consider the hot dogs prepackaged?
No, they would be-
They're not.
-they would be different. We have breakfast sandwiches and that type of thing. They would have a cheeseburger and a hamburger that have been precooked, prepackaged.
Would be prepackaged.
Prepackaged. Precooked, I mean, these things are ready to eat.
Any other questions?
Oh, I move approval of new business item B.
Second.
And did you want to state your middle name again?
It is Franklin.
Kenneth Franklin Elliott.
That is correct.
That's what I walked away with very clearly from your last appearance.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries, and we wish you the best of luck.
Thank you, you all be well.
Thank you. Which brings us to Communications B. This is a resolution adopted May 14th, 2012 by the East Greenwich Town Council in support of Senate Bill 2012, Senate 2928, an act relating to taxation, taxation of farm, forest, and open space land that would enable the tax assessor to save postage in the first mailing of a form to landowners to confirm that space is still farm, forest, or open land as received, placed on file, and the Town Council further directs.
Well, we discussed this at the work session, and I think the difference that we're talking about is whether to send it first-class mail or just standard postage, which I think we can all support, the standard postage. So I move that we support this resolution.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Which brings us to comments from interested citizens. At this time, going to open the microphone for any citizen that would like to come and speak at the podium. Seeing none, I'm just, I'm going to turn to Mr. O'Neill.
Did you have a comment?
Yes, matter of fact, I do. I don't know what this council can do, but obviously the news in the last week, Mr. Schelling, 38 Studios certainly doesn't read well, certainly is a cause of some concern, but my concern is throwing the baby out with the bathwater here because the EDC has made a lot of good smaller loans. Province Business News today had a number of those companies, solid companies, who at the same time had raised private capital and taken down a lot less than the EDC had authorized them to do, but that's still in the bank, it's still there for them to use to grow their companies, which is based upon employment. There are a lot of things that went wrong with Studio 38, and I'm not going to bore the council here for too long a period of time, but I'm going to read you a couple of sentences that I put forward two and a half years ago with Governor Chair, Kachery was in office, a resolution, and saying good things about the $125 million that the General Assembly and the governor approved for this new business lending. But what I talked about was the fact that the program had no representative on the board by the EDC. Never heard of such a thing with any venture capital firm, anyone giving a few hundred thousand dollars, let alone $75 million. That was the most obvious situation, and there was no constant monitoring of the money that was lent there. I mean, everything seems to be a surprise, which is really too bad because the Province Business News, which you all should get a copy of, talked about a number of the successful loans that the EDC has made to smaller Rhode Island businesses who are hiring, producing more goods and services, and doing a lot of things right. And I think that's incredibly important, so I'm hoping somehow or another, I didn't want to put a resolution together, but I think the governor should know, the General Assembly members should know, that somehow or another, we went astray with Studio 38, that there are a lot of good programs and a lot of good companies in the pipeline up there, and this is what worries me, because I understand we've got about 18 to 20 companies in the pipeline, and ever since the Studio 38 issue has come forward, nothing has been discussed with these smaller companies who need some funding, who need the help of government, which sometimes can be very, very positive, especially in the state of Rhode Island. So I'm just hoping that this council can let the governor know and the General Assembly know that we just need to learn what happened, correct it, and do things right in the future. I think that's very important. And with that in mind, I think we really need a conversation with the General Assembly members. I think the Studio 38 issue, the EDC's important. As you know, I've offered resolutions before on the casino activity in the state of Rhode Island. I'm convinced more than ever, all the General Assembly seems to be thinking about is what percentage to take. What I think we should be thinking about is how best to use the casinos, which are a fact of life, we have them, and I'm fully, fully in belief that both Providence and Newport are the place to have the new casino activity and table games. You can easily work out the entertainment venue with P-Packs, places like that, but why not complement two of our great cities, which are great to visit, for conferences, conventions? This makes no sense, the General Assembly spending, you know, what percentage are we going to get when maybe it's best to look at Newport and Providence? And former Ambassador Mayor Joe Paolino has written recently, other developers, that this is the place to do this in Providence and Newport. Complement where you have other strengths. I mean, heaven's sakes, you're going to take the family to Lincoln or Taunton in Massachusetts for the week? What are you going to visit? You want to come to Providence or Newport, the coastline here. Couple other things, too, which really amaze me here, the governor's put forward a municipal relief package, as you know, especially concerning the distressed cities. We know who they are. I don't know what One Sackett, Wes Warwick did today, but they're on the verge of bankruptcy. I wish there was another way to get around this. The governor needs help because the cities and towns, very difficult for them to unilaterally with the way the contracts are written, to potentially change the COLAs, and I think they really need a parallel vote with the General Assembly, that this is something we've got to pay attention to, because believe it or not, this is harming our property taxpayers down here and our citizens. Providence, East Providence, everybody, One Sackett, they need money months ahead of time. That is the income earned by our residents, that we are helping these other folks out. So this, we've got to work together on this. Oh, there's something else again, binding arbitration, you know all about that, all but one city and town said, no, 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 school committee, no, 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 General Assembly passed it last year at the Senate, but fortunately Gordon Fox stopped it at the House level. But again, a disconnect between the General Assembly and ourselves. What's interesting about One Sackett, I just wanted to bring this up to you, the Senate passed it easily to have the Town Council in One Sackett pass a 13% tax supplement, property tax, in the current year. Passed it easily. But Representative, I think I got her name right here, Ms. Baldelli Hunt, in the House, pleaded with Gordon Fox, pleaded with the House, you can't do this, you can't let them tax our folks at 13%, nor can the state cover this money, because there isn't a single plan that's been put forward by anyone in One Sackett, school committee or Town Council, to work on this problem. This is a representative that stopped it, actually came, you know, pleaded with them. Unbelievably important. Again, what's happening? The Senate's voting yes, a House rep's saying no, there's no plan in place? Again, it would have been our money helping them out ahead of time. Couple other things here, this motor vehicle tax revaluation, evaluation act, it seems to be watered down every time I read about it, but it's something that, when we put our budget together, is something that could cost this community $500,000, $600,000, $700,000, I think Steve mentioned to us, if they come through with the true retail market value for that. And a couple other things here, a number of representatives have put in income tax increase legislation, and it needs to stop. The state of Rhode Island has actually, through the first nine months this year, collected $40 million more from what I consider a tax increase last year, because what last year did, the General Assembly said, what we're going to do is limit the deductions. They dropped the income tax rate 9.99 to 5.99, but limit the deductions, and so far, we're about $40 million ahead. No one has been able to tell us whether it's because of that deduction elimination, so on and so forth, but you do not put a 3%, 4%, 5% new tax, I don't care if it's income over $200,000, whatever the numbers are, you can't do it when our state is the only one in the nation going up with unemployment. We've got the Studio 38. We need a collective team to get together here. So again, that's another issue here. Again, advancing state aid to distressed communities ahead of time here, again, it's our taxpayer money that's up at the Treasurer's Office up there, that we're helping other communities a month or two months ahead of time, while nothing's being done by their respective Town Councils or the General Assembly. And the other thing that we need an absolute team approach on, I brought this up before, I thought I had some support on this, but small business, the restaurant 2% tax has got to be just killed in its tracks, the cottage rental, which is a major business down here in Southern Rhode Island, South Kingston, 13%, got to be stopped in its tracks, the starving of the University of Rhode Island, $40 million in the last decade, less money for URI. This is incredible, and parents are just choking on the tuitions there. The taxing of South County Hospital on this disproportionate share program, this has got to stop. It costs the hospital $1 million last year, we're looking at $1.5 million and more this year. Again, we don't hear from our General Assembly on this, and where are they? And we need to have a unified voice, but all these issues I brought up here are a disaster for the state and this community, and somehow or another, we need to pull them in here and say, you know, these are our thoughts, maybe they're, you know, that we're diverging on those thoughts, but I don't think anybody can argue with some of the points I've brought up here, because each one of them is going to hurt our taxpayers here in South Kingston. And especially on top of this, with everybody's equity value, home values continue to drop, this is painful for every one of our constituents, so.
So I know, Jim, during the work session, we talked about possible meetings with the, you know, legislators, so I think some of what you have framed will be some of the topics. I'm sure that will be discussed. And I was glad to see that the Town Council here did write the resolution to support the hospital, so I think individual phone calls as well, you know, I know in my notes, specifically with that legislation for to support Wesley Hospital and South County Hospital, I know I'm going to make some personal phone calls on that to our legislators.
But I certainly appreciate that, and we've done that, and this council has supported binding arbitration, our school committee has, there are a number of things we've done, it's just all these other peripheral areas surrounding us that are so dangerous here, but we don't have a lot of time left here, these are serious issues, and, but I'm concerned, for instance, Jim Sheehan, Senator Sheehan, has talked about, no way is that 2% going forward, but we haven't had a united voice of all the reps and senators down here. We have to have a united voice. So who's not on the same wavelength? This is what we have to learn. And what is the problem? But you can't keep attacking success of what we do well with small business, our restaurants, our hotels down here, URI and our hospital, that is our business and livelihood, these are our residents. And we're getting no help whatsoever up at the State House, and not just the governor, the General Assembly mainly.
All the comments here at the table. Carol?
I just want to say, of course, Jim, I don't think there's anyone that isn't upset about the 38 Studios. I mean, that's, I think that came to a shock, as a shock to everyone, that the entire place closed its doors, laid off all the workers, the money, they're going to do a forensic audit, I believe, is the last move that the governor has planned. Anyway, I would like to say that we did also come out loud and clear against the 2% tax. We did do a resolution from this council, which we sent to our legislators and the governor and anybody else who would listen, along with the South County Hospital resolution that Ella just spoke of. But the other thing that, on a positive note, we did have a meeting with the governor and many members of the Small Business Administration from the state at the Palisades Mill, I think it was a couple of months ago, and that was very well attended by business people in the community, and lots of questions came forward, and I think it was very informative, and hopefully the governor and the Economic Development Commission will continue with that type of, those type of meetings to aid small businesses with loans and, you know, developing their businesses and different ways of doing small business. But on a much lighter note, some of us on the council were fortunate to attend the previewing of the movie Moonrise Kingdom at the Jane Pickens Theater last week, and I have to say, the town of South Kingston was showcased very well, from the very beginning of the movie, it starts off at Bayfield Farm, and it is a funny movie, it's fast-moving, it's quirky, it's loaded with celebrities, and it has a cast of teenagers and Boy Scouts that do a marvelous job, and I think anybody who goes to see it from Rhode Island will recognize not only South Kingston, Jamestown, Newport, Yagu, Camp, and many more, but it was, it was quite a movie, and I think it opens, I don't know, Liz Boardman might know better than me, but I think it's somewhere at the end of June, she's shaking, yes. So I hope you can all get a chance to see it, and I think it was a marvelous opportunity to do some economic development in our town in a small way, but to benefit certain businesses with no repercussions on the land that it took place on, other than to show how beautiful it was. And it just, I hope it takes off, and good luck to Wes Anderson and all of the celebrities. It was Bill Murray and Ed Norton and Bruce Willis, I mean, it goes on and on. But good luck to them and good luck, I'd like to see more opportunities like that rise up here in South Kingston, because I think we welcomed them well, and it was good for many local businesses and the town, so, good for them. So that's the positive on that note.
Polly? And then Jim?
You know about that movie, Carol, I didn't know about it, you said some of the council-
I've received, I've received an invitation from the Rhode Island Film Commission, an email.
Not all the council.
Individual invitations, I think, went out.
I did not receive an invitation.
I didn't either, Kathy.
Who did that come from?
It was done from-
Rhode Island Film Commission.
Rhode Island Film Commission. So who attended?
I got an invitation, I got an email. I don't think that it was an invitation for the Town Council, I think it was invite-
It was cast and crew.
Specific invitations.
So the cast?
Cast, crew, yes.
So you, Ella, Jim, did you get invited? Did you get the email?
I got invited.
So three council members.
Three council.
Okay.
And I do believe-
Polly, did you receive anything?
No, I did not.
No, neither did I.
And I do believe that there's going to be a second showing, and I will state that I think Wes Anderson is, what I heard, was over in Cairns, France with the film festival.
I heard that, yeah.
And this was actually the opening of the film festival in France, and I heard it got a standing ovation. So there is going to be a second showing, and I believe it's going to be sometime in June, and I think this was a limited amount of tickets and just specific invitations to-
The three people who voted for it, okay, okay.
So, I'm not quite sure if I would frame it that way, but-
Just interesting stuff.
But Jim, did you want to make a statement before I list some dates that we have?
Yeah, no, I just wanted to thank Carol for bringing up what positive that we do have in the state, and I appreciate the, what happened to the Palisades Mill. I was sorry that the governor left early that day, as you know, a lot of the business folks were disappointed he left so early. So sometimes what my whole theme is going back here, sometimes this council has got to take the bull by the horns, and I think all 39 cities and towns, their councils frankly need to be more involved with what's going on in the state. But- But my real reaction to, to the comments of, I mean, of the newspaper, what's happened with Studio Thirty Eight, this is no time for gloating. And as I said, I don't want to throw the baby out with the bathwater. It's very important that the EDC continue its mission, very important that they learn from what went wrong here, but very important they continue their mission. And the reason it's so important, you cannot get a loan, you're lucky if your IBM or CVS, you can't go to a bank and get a loan. Don't think if you're a small business startup, I don't care if you make tires, a restaurant, you cannot get a loan from a bank. So we need EDCs, we need government help a lot of times. And I was thinking of Governor Patrick up in Boston. In the newspaper this weekend, he was not gloating about Studio Thirty Eight, because he himself, Massachusetts Legislature, put fifty million dollars into a solar firm that filed bankruptcy. But they took a chance, they're a lot larger than we are, their economic growth is a lot greater than ours, unemployment's going down, they have a lot of things going for them. But he tried, he tried green industry and jobs. So all I'm saying here is that let's unite, let's try to think what went wrong, get it right, but don't starve our institutions and small businesses that need help. So that's some point in my conversation here.
And I think if we keep sending that message, that's really what we need to be doing. Kathy.
I'll add to what Jim says, I'm just getting over the movie ticket thing, but, because I went up to the EDC last year as part of my prior job, and really took a good look around at EDC and the different divisions and different departments, and, yeah, I'm not happy with what happened with Thirty Eight Studios, and, you know, that was going to be vetted out, and the state police I, I hear today are, are involved in this, and again, a forensic audit is going to be due. But it's true not to throw the baby out with the bathwater, because there's also a Defense Division of EDC, and defense is a huge part of jobs here in Rhode Island, and the Defense Division, the Defense Division has done a good job keeping places like what we have, and I drive by every single day out in Portsmouth at, I'm going to forget the name of it right now. What's the military place out in Portsmouth? This is terrible, I drive by it. Yes, Raytheon, thank you, I'm sorry, I drive by it every single day, Raytheon, and keep, and helping to keep, you know, contracts coming here, we have EB in North Kingstown, which employs a lot of people who live in this general area and in North Kingstown, that help pay the taxes and keep these towns well-run communities. So there are good things going on. EDC did make good decisions in bringing companies like Unify, United Foods, into the state of Rhode Island from Connecticut, who's provided a lot of jobs, they have a big facility up in Providence, they brought in a battery manufacturing company, I can't think of the name of them off the top of my head, the list goes on and on. So there is other good work that is done by the EDC. Yes, was this a bad hit? Absolutely. Will we ever get the true story? I hope we do, it's going to probably take some time. But again, I agree with Jim, we shouldn't throw the baby out with the bathwater, there are a lot of emerging companies that are coming out of Providence that have some good ideas. I met with some of these companies at some business convention last year, and I think the EDC plans on getting behind some of them, and I think it's, it's going to be more jobs down the future, down the road in the future for Rhode Islanders. So I'm really not for the whole glasses-half-empty, but look at what they have done, that has been positive, and I think you have to build from there. And then as far as some of the other things that Jim ran down, I think that we've sent, you know, the binding arbitration, the meal tax, the South County Hospital, the things that we can directly affect that are in our community, I think that we have passed on our information, I have no problem reiterating it to anybody that wants to hear it upstate, but I think the council has done a good job with that. Thank you.
Thank you. If nobody else has anything to say, back to Jim.
Yeah, the, again, I'm just hoping, but I'm afraid there is a disconnect between the General Assembly members and not just our council, other councils, and we need to correct that. So what I was trying to say is we need to have a sit-down and really let these folks know. Headline today's paper, Rhode Island Banking on Strong Tourism Season. I think that says it all. This two percent can't fly. This cottage tax can't fly. You know, some of these things. And going back to some tax exempt stuff, look what Providence has had to do in the state of Rhode Island to save the Biltmore. It's a huge pilot program for the entire eighteen million dollars that's being bought for. Landmark, to save landmark, to save hundreds of jobs. They've had to do the same thing, sometimes this is bitter medicine, but these are established institutions, hundreds if not thousands of jobs, we've got to try to learn, bring it down to a real fighting machine, if you will, but, you know, we've got to do what we have to do with our assets in this state. And they happen to be assets, and there are ways to, to make them really work a whole lot better. So that's my conversation.
Further comments here at the table?
I just have a few dates and events to recognize. On May twentieth, there was an event for a young woman from Narragansett, and it was really a collaborative effort between Tiverton Fire Department, South Kingstown Fire Department, and Narragansett Fire Department. So I attended that, and it was nice to see a lot of our South Kingstown residents and firefighters there to support this fundraiser. I also wanted to mention that on Saturday, May twenty-sixth, we had the first South Kingstown Police Department's promotion and award ceremony, and it was so beautifully done, and I believe we have three police officers that were sworn in, and many that received special accommodation and awards. And I didn't know if you wanted to comment, Chief, but it was, I didn't know if you wanted to make a comment, it was just beautifully done, and hopefully will be an annual event.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to pass the accolade to Captain Allen, who was the principal organizer of the event. It was a beautiful event, I'm very proud. And I want to publicly thank Captain Allen for taking the lead on.
Thank you. And thank you, Captain Allen. I also wanted to just reiterate, it's been at the town council meeting before, but this Saturday, June third, is the Place to Grow Walk Run to support one of our preschools in the local area. And on May sixth, there was also another collaborative effort for supporting a family, a student in need with cancer, and it was at the bowling alley, and I know the Toth, you know, Toth family, and I know Sally Manetti had sent me an email, and it was just another way that this community supports, you know, when someone's in need here, it's just an outstanding place, town that we live in. And I've already spoken about the Eagle Court of Honor on May sixth, and our three Eagle Scouts. Girl Scout bridging ceremony is going to take place at the Village Green on June first, and we have a proclamation from the town to Julia Craig, which, if there's any town council member that would like to attend, I will present, be presenting Julia with her proclamation for her gold award. Did I miss anything? Last but not least, the Memorial Day Parade. Just phenomenal, best Memorial Day Parade. We had five survivors from Iwo Jima. It was just so beautifully done, weather collaborator, thank you Terry Murphy for helping, you know, put together that event, it was just stunning. And it was beautiful to see Erica Van Pelt sing God Bless America in memory of all of our fallen heroes that day. It was just wonderful. So we live in a great town, and just wanted to make mention of those activities. Any other comments from interested citizens before we move on? Town managers report, please.
Just one item to, to comment on. In the packet that was provided on May twenty-fourth, I provided correspondence from the Director of Planning relative to a proposal for the Biscuit City Road Emergency Access that would come in through Teft Hill. The, the direct access would be from White Horn Drive to High Metal Lane. The recommendation has gone through the town's Traffic and Transportation Review Committee and through the town's Planning Board. At this point, it's being brought back to the council. What I've suggested is that a informational public hearing be scheduled. I think that the best time to schedule would be the second meeting in June, so it'll give us ample opportunity to provide at least two weeks of notice in the, the local press and a block ad for that informational hearing, as well as to get contact to the civic associations in those neighborhoods to advise them of the council's consideration for that evening. Other than that one item, I'd certainly answer any questions on the reports that have been issued subsequent to the last council meeting. If there are none, I'll yield the floor to the solicitor.
Any questions for Steve? Thank you, Steve. Town solicitors report.
Unless there are any questions, Ella, I'm all set.
Questions here for Mike Rosello. Thank you, Mike. And, which moves us to appointments, and we have a few.
We have two appointments to make on the Conservation Commission, Lorraine Jubert, am I saying that right?
Jubert.
Jubert. She, I move that we appoint her to the Conservation Commission for a period of three years, which would go from today's date, which is May twenty-ninth, two thousand and twelve, to May twenty, May of two thousand and fifteen.
Second.
Motion and second, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries.
I also move that we appoint.
Sue's just pointing out that that term actually would expire on nine fourteen, because it is replacing what William Murray Gates.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so both of those terms will expire nine fourteen, so if the motion could just reflect that the term would expire nine fourteen.
Okay, so the motion for Lorraine Jubert is until, her appointment would be until September of two thousand and fourteen.
Second.
We have motion and second, let's take a revote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries, five zero zero.
And I also make a motion that we appoint Mary L. Talbot Rabuano, and her term would expire in September of two thousand and fourteen.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries.
And also, I move that we appoint Robert M. Schofield to the Housing Authority. His term would go for the full five years, I believe, this is a vacancy.
Term would expire October twenty-fourteen.
To serve until October two thousand and fourteen on the Housing Authority.
Second.
We have motion and second, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries, five zero zero. Thank you. Which brings us to, new, let's see, New Business Item D. This is a resolution authorizing an award of contract to Gordon R. Archibald Incorporated, two hundred Main Street, Pawtucket, Rhode Island, for bridging consulting engineering services in an amount not to exceed twenty-one thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars, including a two thousand contingency, and as further described in a memorandum from the Public Services Director to the Town Manager dated May eleventh, two thousand and twelve, entitled Townwide Bridge Inspection Engineering Services Recommendation. Steve.
The town submitted requests for proposals to three, three pre-qualified consultants, four doing the bridge study. They were Pear Corporation, Gordon Archibald, and Commonwealth Engineering. After review of the proposals submitted, recommendation is for the, for award to the Gordon Archibald. There's nine bridges that have spans in excess of twenty feet that the town is responsible for maintenance and upkeep. They are municipal structures, nine of those fourteen structures that exceed the twenty feet are in need of the periodic inspection. Recommendation is that Gordon Archibald be awarded as presented in John's memo of May twelfth, May eleventh.
Thank you, Steve. Do we have a motion?
I move approval of New Business Item D. D.
Second.
Motion and second, ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. We have New Business Item E, this is a resolution authorizing the South Kingstown Partnership for Prevention to use the town seal on signage proposed to be posted in liquor establishments as part of the partnership's campaign to reduce impaired driving, as further described in a memorandum from the Town Manager to the Town Council dated May twenty-third, two thousand and twelve, and entitled, South Kingstown Partnership for Prevention Signage Campaign. And I believe that we have someone here to speak on this, so Steve, I didn't know if you wanted to start.
The council received a letter that was written by Keith Actonair, who's the Chair of the, the partnership under the date of five fifteen twelve. That was subsequent to an initial letter that had been received by a proprietor of one of the liquor establishments in the town, Mr. Perry. His recommendation to the, to the Chair of the committee was that they consider requesting the police department and the town council to endorse the placement of signs on a voluntary basement basis in various restaurants or liquor establishments where liquor is served that would simply say that the restaurant is committed to the safety of the customers and their neighbors, and that they appreciated participation and cooperation in helping to eliminate impaired driving in the community. The thought was that this would provide a second layer of consciousness for those both tending bar as well as those first persons that were looking for additional alcohol service, to understand the responsibility that both parties had in terms of providing for a safe community. Perry Rosso had presented it, the committee endorsed it. At the time that I received the initial request from Perry, I forwarded to the police department as well and asked for their review and consideration, and received strong support both from the chief and from Captain Allen. And Captain Allen has served for many years as a liaison from the police department to the, to the partnership. So with that, we ask that we have a formal letter from the partnership to come to the council to ask for this type of endorsement. I also ask that if members of the partnership would be willing to come forward tonight to talk directly to the issue, and certainly they're all here.
Thank you, Steve.
Keith, I didn't know if you wanted to start?
I'm up in support. Perry was going to speak too. Like, like Mr. Alfred said, the idea is to reduce impaired driving using, using the signage. Hopefully, the customer would be not so likely to overindulge, and also would give the server, who is oftentimes kind of trained to make the customer happy and give them what they want, they're always trained that, but it would give them, you know, more, make it easier, easier for the server to, to turn the customer down if they felt that, that they've had too much. The idea that other restaurants would also display the signage would, I think, kind of resonate with the customer more, no matter where they go in this area, they're going to see that signage and realize, well, this is something I ought to pay attention to. So it's kind of something simple that I think we could display either inside or outside or, you know, somewhere in restaurants, whether it's liquor stores or, you know, the popular restaurants around here, and might, might help.
Thank you, Perry. Do we have questions here at the table? Polly, and then Carol and Jim.
I just think it's a great idea. Do you happen to remember where, where we stand in the list of percentage of drunk drivers we have in this state? I think we're one of the highest in the country. We have more deaths due to drunken driving. I think anything we do to encourage people to go slow on drinking is a good idea. So thank you for thinking of it.
Thank you.
I think it was Carol and then Jim.
Yeah, no, I think it's a great idea. Do you have a copy of the sign?
There's no, there's no actual sign. I, I much like the, the kind of outdoor signs that I have about estuaries and salt ponds, gave me, you know, kind of the idea, and it would be simply, you know, the wording, you know, the restaurant name in my case would be the Matuncoyster Bar is committed to the safety of our customers and our neighbors, we appreciate your participation and cooperation in helping us eliminate impaired driving in our community, and, and then followed by this effort is supported by the South Kingstown Partnership for Prevention, hopefully the town of South Kingstown and the South Kingstown Police Department to kind of.
And where would you put it, Perry? Is it inside the bar or outside the restaurant?
I think in my restaurant's case, I, I think somewhere on the outside and maybe something smaller on the inside. smaller on the inside, but I think giving restaurant owners and managers a kind of option of different signs would be the best idea, ones that they can either have inside their bar, and whether it's eight and a half by 11, you know, simple piece of paper that's framed, just like a liquor license or something, or something larger. You know, I was going to do it on the corrugated plastic, maybe somewhere in the fence that, you know, is near the patio area.
Good. Jim?
Perry, just for the microphone, would you reintroduce yourself, because we only called you Perry?
Oh, Perry Rasso.
But also with both gentlemen on either side of you, just introduce them and yourself.
Perry Rasso and Jeff Allen, and I'm sorry.
Keith McNamara.
Keith McNamara, Chair of the South Kingstown Partnership for Prevention.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I wanted to follow up with a question. Is there going to be one size? Is this going to be a standard-sized? Do restaurants, packaged stores get to choose whether this is put into a window, exterior, interior?
It's totally voluntary, and, you know, how it, you know, appears, I think, I mean, I'm not sure about it, but I'm assuming as long as the folks from S.K., you know, PP are able to, you know, I think it's simply the wording is what's important. There's no, we don't have a standard right now for everything. If we didn't have the standardized thing, it would probably, it might be more effective, but, you know, the town seal, the mention of the South Kingstown Police Department, I think, are what is going to make it, you know, add validity to it, to the customers, so.
All right, and some places, so you'd only need one at your place, other establishments might need them per floor, per bar, per... I just don't know if there's any recommendation from your group.
I mean, I was thinking that I would kind of throw one outside on the fence and maybe fit a smaller one inside, in kind of, maybe a smaller, you know, regular paper, and one outside that's corrugated plastic, but I think for the most part, if everyone just had a simple signage with the seal on it, that, you know, might be a good thing for, it might just soften the blow if...
I certainly understand your effort here. I'm just wondering if it looks like a health department sign?
I was kind of picturing something that might be similar to that, as official as that, might help, something that had some kind of official look to it would be good.
And I think one of the things that we want to do is to get the council authorization, and we'll put a facsimile sign together. One of the concerns I have, and it's the first time I'm hearing it tonight, is the outside signs, that could pose a problem to us as far as zoning issues are concerned. The objective, I thought, was to have a framed sign that would be of a uniform nature, that would have the three logos on there for the council, the partnership, as well as the Police Department, with the phraseology that Perry read into the record, and then to make that, make the availability of the sign noticed to the various bar owners, and to ask them to post it prominently. I wasn't aware that we were looking at outside signs, because there, we've got to make sure that if the signage is done, I mean, on Perry's place, if it was put within the gardens area itself, certainly that's not an issue, but we've got to be concerned if it was done in some other manner with some of the other restaurants. So, I think what we need to do is to get the partnership to give us a facsimile of what they want as a sign, once they get the approvals in place, which hopefully they would have tonight, and then at that point, for them to give us an idea as to where they wanted those posted. Then the question would be, who would be notifying the various restaurants? The partnership most likely would take that lead and ask for voluntary cooperation. But the idea of the outside signs, Perry, we're going to need to look at that issue.
Yeah, I was going to get there, but I prefer uniformity. I'm not comfortable right now that some people can step to a plate and have a three-by-three, and some three inches by three, so I can't support it without some uniformity here. And should it go on the wall with the Department of Health sign, everything else, versus inside, outside, at the bar, standing in a plastic container? I just need some uniformity.
What I'd like to do for you, then, is if the council agrees with the concept, let us come back and with a sign that would provide what we believe to be the dimensions, as well as whether they be interior or exterior, or a combination. I think at this point, what we want to do is to start out slowly, have them as an interior sign, most likely close to, or in close proximity to the liquor establishment's license that has to be prominently displayed at the bar, and to have that as be the start.
Yeah, and we are, this is voluntary.
It would be all voluntary.
I don't want that kind of implied, if you don't, then you're not part of the team concept. I hope that doesn't happen.
Similar to the regulations that the council has passed in the past, as far as the, you know, servers needing to go through the status program, all of those different things.
That I know. All right, thanks, Ellen.
I just think it is absolutely fantastic. It's a great effort, and I applaud, you know, being unified, and it's wonderful that it's being approached from a business, you know, to other businesses. I just think that that's, you know, a good way to really move this forward, and we have lost many a youth here in our town, and I know that this came from some thought with a recent loss that we had. And I'd also just like to mention that Eileen Stone, the Chair of the South Kingstown Partnership for Prevention, is also here tonight, so I full support, and I applaud you for your efforts. Further comments? With that said, could we have a motion, please?
I move approval of New Business Item E.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion?
And this vote will come with a uniform? Steve, I mean, is this going to be part of a uniform package for this approval?
If you provide the authorization, I'll bring back a copy of the signed facsimile for the council, if that's what you wish. If you want to amend your motion to say that you want to have a final approval, once you see the facsimile, you could do it that way, or really, if I bring it back to you, you can tell me if you like it the way it is, or it's up to the council.
Jim, I mean, they have to abide by the sign ordinance, there's no question about that anyway.
Jim, are you concerned with the area of the sign?
I'm worried that some people are going to have a monstrous sign, and others just a little tape on the wall, and I like to have uniformity, like the health department sends out everybody else. I don't see anything wrong with that. So, since we have a motion on the floor, I'll second the motion, then, that we approve this based upon approving a, Steve Alfred presenting us with a uniform, a copy of the language, as well as the groups that are supporting this. So, that'll be my amended motion somewhere in there. Sorry, Sue, my language is all over the place.
I'd be glad to do that.
But it needs a second, so we'll see what happens.
Already had a motion.
I thought we already just did the...
There's a motion and a second on the floor.
It's already a motion and a second.
And according to Robert's Rules of Orders, we can have up to three motions on the floor, but I think it's really better to amend.
Well, I said that, I am amending the motion to include Steve Alfred's...
So, Sue, did you...
I'll second Jim's amendment.
So, can we, and the person that made the original motion is, are they okay with that, and the person that seconded?
What are we doing now? We're allowing them to, I mean, what they're asking for is to use the town seal, and I...
Just to use the town seal.
That's all they're asking for right now, is to use the town seal.
And then Steve's going to bring back, you know, the dimensions, the font, all of, you know, the uni, it will be uniform throughout each restaurant. So, all this motion is, is asking to use the town seal.
Yes.
Is that, are you in agreement with that? And then they'll come back with the uniform, or do you really want that part of the motion? It's up to you. Because we can have Sue reread the motion. Did you get it, Sue?
I will, I'll abstain, then. I'll withdraw my motion.
You can withdraw your motion.
I'm going to withdraw the motion.
And I'll withdraw my second.
All right, and I'm not sure that...
And we just have a motion, and...
Sue got it. Okay.
I mean, we're authorizing the use of the town seal in their endeavor to make this sign that's going to support, you know, less drinking in an establishment, and it's voluntary, and you just haven't figured out how you're going to, what the sign's going to look like.
Right.
But it certainly has to go in accordance with the sign ordinance, as we know.
I understand Mr. O'Neill's concern, and we wanted to get over the philosophy. We talked about the philosophy. We really didn't get into the placard size, but I think our intention was to definitely come up with a uniform placard, if you will, that'd be standard. It's just, you know, we've basically been meeting and talking about the philosophy and getting the permission for the seals, and then, you know, forgive us for not having prepared a placard, but that's pretty much what our thought process was, to have a uniform placard, and we have no problem coming up on the design and coming back and presenting it, or having Mr. Alfred present it.
I'm sure by tomorrow morning, Patty Gardner will be assigned by the captain to come up with a uniform sign that she can then bring back to the partnership, and we can then bring that back to the council. And again, I agree that we need to provide uniformity in terms of the sign, as well as the size, and I think that that should be a discussion to be had, and then bring it back, and I'll send it to the council.
So, is it possible to do, move forward with this motion, and then if Jim felt comfortable making a second motion, bringing forward a uniform placard for future approval of the Town Council? Would that work?
I withdraw my motion, and Polly withdrew her second. I'm going to vote nay on this, because I don't want to give something out with a promise coming back. All I want is to have it in front of me.
Okay.
If I got to have the seal, like, behind us here, three feet, Diane, I need to see a uniformity. That's all I want to see. I think that's a reasonable request. So, anyway, but I don't want you to withdraw your motion. The idea of this is excellent, and I think we all support that. I just don't like giving away something first without seeing what I've got.
Well, Jim, I mean, the reality is, if a business owner wants to blow this thing up to take up half a wall, they can do that in their own, their own place. You can't tell them, you can't put up that poster, you can't put up this picture, you can't put up this sign. Yes, you can outside, but, I mean...
I don't disagree. I don't disagree.
Okay, any further discussion before we vote? Would you have any parting remarks? Any last-minute comments before we take the vote?
Thank you.
Okay. So, we have this resolution, it was a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Abstention, motion carries, 4-1-0. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is, we're going to make the motion when it comes F and G together. This is a resolution authorizing an award of bid in drainage concrete curb retaining wall materials to the following bidders that are listed, unit prices, and as further described in a memorandum from the Public Services Director to the Town Manager, dated May 21st, entitled Bid Recommendation Drainage Concrete Curb Retaining Wall Materials, and G, according to the record. So, at this time, just going to turn it over to Steve.
On a yearly basis, the town goes out for price quotes for the purchase of drainage and concrete curb and retaining wall materials, as well as going out to bid for all types of road building materials. The request for proposals goes out to approximately 15 different firms. 12 of those firms provided bids back on various items within the bidding documents itself. Memorandums of May 21st and from the Public Services Director itemize what all of the bid prices were that were received, as well as the recommendation for award of each of the materials. That is summarized on the agenda, items, under Items F and G. F and G is in full concert with the Director's recommendations. I recommend the council approve as presented.
Thank you.
Alice, no questions, then. I move approval of F and G resolutions on the new business as presented on tonight's agenda.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries, 5-0-0. Item 13 is a closed executive session pursuant to Rhode Island General Law 42-46-5A2 to discuss matters pertaining to litigation, Village Liquors versus Town of South Kingstown, and pursuant to Rhode Island General Law 42-46-5A5 to discuss matters related to the acquisition or lease of real property for public purposes, or of the disposition of publicly held property where an advanced public information would be detrimental to the interest of the public. So, could we have a roll call? A motion to go into executive session? Carol?
I move that we go into executive session.
Second.
And can we have a roll call, please, Susan?
Council President Whaley?
Aye.
Councilwoman Foggerty?
Aye.
Councilwoman Fogarty?
Aye.
Councilman O'Neill?
Aye.
All in favor?
If I'm in favor, we are in executive session at 8:36. Thank you.